Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sandra Scheffrath. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. And this afternoon, I had the pleasure of speaking with Rob Corman. He's one of the candidates for city council in Plantation. Um, Plantation is one of the cities that's part of our club. It's Plantation Sunrise, Lauderdale Lakes, Lauda Hills. Um, all of that area is part of one of the cities that our club is involved with. So I saw him at another forum and I noticed his Dartmouth sides in the back. Uh, my brother went to Dartmouth, so I was like, go green. And they reached out to me, so I have an op- so I'm excited that they did that. So we get a chance to talk about what it is that he wants to do um as a city council member for the city of Plantation. So go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll start talking about what um what your plans are.
Perfect. Um, my name is Rob Corman. I'm lived in Plantation now for 21 years. We raised our daughter here. My wife uh was also a Dartmouth graduate and my daughter graduated just this last year from Dartmouth and is now getting her PhD at University of Virginia. Um, in political theory, oddly enough, which had nothing to do with this particular run.
And I actually spoke to your wife and she said University of Chicago is one of the schools that she was considering. And I'm a University of Chicago grad.
She was, and actually there was, there was one thing about the University of Chicago program that she really, really liked. Um, but when it push came to shove, based on the subset of political theory she wanted, the professor who's the guy, I guess, in it is the one who was at University of Virginia. But yes, she was very excited for both options.
Oh, that is, that's very exciting.
Um, but to give you a little background on myself, I'm an airline pilot. I've been flying for American Airlines since 2000 and I've been flying commercially for 27 years. After September 11th, I was furloughed, so I went back to school. I got my master's degree in education and I taught high school for 10 years. And I've been back flying on the flight deck now for five and a half years. When I decided to run for city council, it was for a very particular issue that was going to be affecting my community. And as I started looking at the broader issue in Plantation, I noticed that the issue, one of unchecked high-density development, was really creating stresses on our city with everything from infrastructure to traffic to social problems. And so I decided to throw my hat in the ring because as I told my students when I taught US government, you don't really have the right to complain unless you're willing to get involved. And so this is me getting involved and I'm glad to answer any and all questions.
Yes, so that's actually one of the things I use, that one of the first questions I usually ask after the candidate introduce themselves is tell me, what is it that made you run, right? Like, why is it that you decided to do that? I've been talking to candidates for like the last year and I tell you like just some of the scrutiny and some of the misinformation that's said about candidates, you know? I'm like, why, how can you subject yourself to all of this, right? Like, why would you put yourself out there? And it's not only you, it's also your family that's impacted by it, right? And sometimes you can't, you can't dispel all of the untruths, right? Like, because if you spend time dealing with the lies, you don't get to, you, you take away from time of you actually stating your mission and your point and what it is that made you want to run. Um, I, I heard that you said in your intro that you had some concerns about high-density development. Can you explain a little bit about what that is and why is it that that's what's important to you?
Sure. Um, to give you a little bit of background also, I studied urban geography in college and I stu- and I taught a class in high school that had a whole section about urban geography. So I'm very familiar with what cities are, how they grow, how they develop. And with regards to density, it comes down to how many people are living in a particular footprint of land, whatever it may be. And all of that is governed by zoning rules. The zoning rules and land use govern how many houses, for example, can sit per acre? How many residences can sit in a particular plot of land? And when you look at Plantation, Plantation started out east of University Drive and eventually grew to encompass everything out past Flamingo. So what you have are different sectors of the city that have different looks to them. And I'm in West Plantation. West Plantation, by and large, is really a density of no more than three units per acre. Depending upon where you live, for example, in Plantation Acres, it's one per acre. And Lennar Homes was going to come into one of the last vacant plots of land, which is roughly 10 and a half acres, and they wanted to build 111 units.
So can you give us like, is that near the Broward Boulevard side of it, the Sunrise side, like?
It is on, it is at the intersection of Hyatus and Broward.
Okay.
Where that particular plot of land is, it's actually on the southeast side of the intersection.
Okay.
And originally, when the community of Hawks Landing purchased the entirety of that plot of land, one of the requirements was that that section, that 10-acre spot, be sold to the Broward County Public School System to eventually put a school up. And when time passed and Broward County realized they don't need a school there, the Plantation schools were under-enrolled, the lot has been vacant ever since and they've tried multiple times to sell it. Lennar is willing to come in and put a very high-density project in there. They're asking for about eight and a half units per acre and the land use is only three per acre. So right off the bat, it requires a change to the land use. And the ultimate decider, for lack of a better word, on who gets to determine what that land use is going to be is city council. So when I started looking at city council and how they have treated other projects, other redevelopment projects, the high-rises that have started to go into Plantation, the area Plantation Walk, which is a big mixed-use property, what I started to see was that really the city council was rubber stamping all of these projects for the developers. And when you looked at who the lobbyists were behind the developments, it was the same guy, the same individuals were involved with pretty much every project that has put high-density housing into Plantation.
So let me stop you a little bit, so we can, um, so when you say hi, and you said it's eight per unit instead of three, so are they gonna put like townhomes there or were they trying to put in like an apartment building with a bunch of units?
What they were gonna do was kind of block housing. So imagine townhomes that share walls. So each complex, each building, for lack of a better word, would have five separate townhomes in it. And they would have higher math time, about 22 of those buildings on a 10-acre piece of property.
Right, okay.
Very little natural space, very little area for water abatement. And when you looked at the plans, while they looked modern and contemporary, if you take a close look at the projects that Lennar has done in Doral and other places, what you get is something that does not live up to the diagrams.
Right.
And more importantly, when you start looking at their traffic study, for example, they claimed 110 units would be maybe 150 cars. Well, not, not realistic.
Not at all.
Not in the modern world. In the modern world, you're looking at probably 220 to 250 cars going in and out of there every day.
Yes.
But the traffic studies don't bear that out. Their publicis- their publicity on it and their PR doesn't bear out the truths of having something in that location. And when I started looking into the other ones, I realized the other developments as well had the same limitations. And so what I wanted to do was bring a non-political voice to the city council. And the best way to do that was for me to run because I know in my own heart, I'm not going to be beholden to any special interest. When I started my campaign, I said from the outset, I'm not taking developer money, I'm not taking PAC money, I'm not taking lobbyist money. And that has cost me probably some endorsements because the political action committees want to be able to influence what's going on. I have a friend who's a developer in Plantation and he wanted to donate and I said, I can't do it because I'm going to be on the side of the angels with this one. So that is, that is where I am right now is I'm making my charge towards Group Five.
Right, no, and tha- and that's extremely important, like, and people don't take that into consideration. Because even just, uh, I mean, I lived, you know, I had two cars, just for me, right? Yes, if you're thinking of like a townhome and it's gonna be like, you know, a different family, you know, a husband and wife, each person have a car, once you get a teenager, they're getting a car. If it's a house, a roommate situation, everybody else have a car. So yeah, that's definitely um one of the issues because tran- public transportation in South Florida is just not the best, right? So oftentimes, people live in cities where they don't work. So that usually brings me into one of the other questions that I asked was about transportation in Plantation. How is the public transportation there? Is there any way, is there any goals or um to make it better, more accessible for the people so they don't have to rely on their vehicles as much?
There, there are some projects out there to get shuttles within Plantation moving, especially in the midtown area of Plantation, which uh back in 85, I want to say, was designated as kind of the central business district for Plantation, for lack of a better word. And so all of the high-density projects, let me rephrase that. Most of the high-density projects that have gone into Plantation have gone into that area between University and Pine Island from 595 to Sunrise. And so what they'd like to do is get shuttles moving in that area so that people don't have to actually get in their cars as much. But that won't change the reality on the ground of life in South Florida because South Florida, like pretty much every major city in the United States, is designed around a car. And so we are going to have people, even if they live in the midtown area, who have these cars. So to your point, how do we get more focused on issues of public transportation? We have to work with Broward County Transit to change the nature of the public bus system. We actually have a node in Plantation on Broward County Transit. And we could leverage that node to hopefully make the system more efficient. I know Dade County Public Transit recently did an audit that resulted in changes to how they did things. And it actually reduced the number of bus routes that were available, yet increased ridership because what they did is they looked at the bus routes that were most efficient. They looked at the bus routes that were going from where people lived to where they worked. They connected it to the Metro Rail that exists down there. So in many ways, Broward County Transit could do the same thing by doing an efficiency study to actually determine where the routes are most efficient. Because we have a node in Plantation, we could take advantage of that by hopefully, if not reworking the Broward County Public Transit schedule and routes through the city, at least working on shuttles that could get people to that point. And that would make that system more efficient. But if as a bedroom community for downtown Fort Lauderdale, people are going to drive in, there's very little we could actually do to get them onto buses here.
Right, yeah, yeah, and tha- and tha- and there's, there's a lot that's on, that, that's, that, that plays into that. And part of it is because people, it's difficult to, you know, have people working in the same city um where they live, right? Um, is there, are there any plans to try to bring businesses into Plantation? Or is that something that the city isn't really built for them to have a lot of um business and infrastructure?
No, actually, Plantation is built very well for infrastructure. We're, we're, we're zoned in such a way that we have several large headquarters of companies here. DHL is here, Magic Leap is here, Motorola, A- American Express. We have a lot of corporate entities that are here and a lot of corporate office space. It's one of the reasons why actually traffic is so bad in Plantation because 70% of the traffic moving north-south on our major arteries is really through traffic. It's people going from one part of town to the other. So it is an attractive place for large corporate-type offices. What they're trying to do to bring in smaller businesses is, in my opinion, misguided and it actually ties to the, the kind of development that's going in. This idea of mixed-use development where you have big buildings, apartments up top, and you have commercial spaces on the bottom floor. The developers who are putting them in are looking at the bottom floor and saying, we're gonna put in, and I'm making up the number, 30-foot frontage uh office space. Well, if you have a 300-foot building, 30-foot frontage, roughly 10 units can go underneath there. When you then look at what the rents are for places like this, the rents are often too high for a small business to move in.
Right.
The space is not subdividable for someone who has a two-person accounting firm to move into. And maybe there's not enough business to generate those rents. So they're gonna go somewhere else or they're gonna stay where they are, which results in a lot of those bottom floors of the mixed-use properties staying vacant. And you can see that in Davie on Griffin Road, there's a recent uh multi-use property that went in. There's the apartment building that's behind the fountains in the Plantation, that all the floors are vacant except for one hairstylist. And what you wind up realizing is that the developers would rather carry the vacant spaces as losses
Yes.
than figure out a way to fill them. And so this really brings me to what I feel is my strength as a candidate, which is I'm not afraid to ask questions. And what I used to tell my students, unless you can get down to why and how and be able to answer a question intelligently, you're not going to be able to stand on two strong feet with regards to your, your, the position you're trying to make. So to look at a developer and say, why is this 30 feet? And they throw out a stat that says, well, if you look at what people want, they want this much square footage. So the next question, well then, of the square footage of the various properties that you've sold, how many are 100% occupied? Can you give us examples of the kind of businesses that are in there? And oftentimes, they're going for the Paneras, the Subways, the, the large chains that can afford that. That doesn't do much for creating a unique business character in your city.
Right, right.
So then you would have to ask them, are you willing to shrink the frontage on those stores? And the answer's probably going to be no. So if the answer's no, as a council that is responsible for giving the final stamp of approval for this project, you have to have the guts to say, if you're not going to be flexible, we're not going to say yes because I can look at this building, this building, and this building in our city. I can go to 20 different cities around the country and show you where this mixed use in these suburban areas are being left blank and empty. So why will it be any different now?
Exactly.
And they probably won't have an answer, but I'm not going to be beholden to any special interests. So I'm going to ask those questions and hopefully push for a compromise on this development. I'm not against development, but I am against high-density development that only benefits the lobbyists and only benefits the developers. It doesn't benefit the current residents in Plantation. And that should be what the priority is, the current residents.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, and when you think about it, it's like the person that's building the Panero is gonna rent out the Panero. They're probably not gonna live in that unit, right? If the whole idea is to have people have their office downstairs or something and they live in the same building, it's not gonna be the person that has the Panero or, you know, the FedEx Kinkos. That's not who's gonna be living in that building, so.
Exactly.
Is, is, is definitely problematic. And what about the environmental con- um environmental consequences of having so much uh activity in such a small place? Are there any environmental concerns besides, you know, the traffic brings pollution and all that other stuff? But what about the water and, you know, all these different strain on the utilities?
Well, and this is, tha- that's the other issue that when you have, when you look at where the current high-density is going in, you have infrastructure that's pushing 40 to 50 years old. And granted, for example, wastewater infrastructure. We have an outstanding utilities department in Plantation. Plantation water has always been held up as some of the best in the state. Well, what you have to do is guarantee that that continues. And so while the wastewater treatment facilities might have been built to X number of gallons per day, there's always gonna be an override built into the system. But as you add more and more people to the system on the existing infrastructure, you get closer to that override on a daily basis. So now issues of maintenance and upkeep come into play where fortunately, we had a bond passed in 2016 and much of the, a good portion of that bond was dedicated towards going towards infrastructure. But you have to think about things like relining your water pipes or relaying your water pipes to limit leaks. You have to think about things like possible overflow situations. And you have to think of the things that I don't think anybody has thought of, like water abatement when we get a heavy rainstorm. If you put in a large high-rise that has a lot of concrete, a lot of asphalt for parking spaces and for walkways and parking spaces for the people who are gonna patronize these new mixed-use structures, what you're doing is you're taking a footprint of land, like the Old Fashioned Mall that's gonna become Plantation Lock, and in essence, you're paving over it. That means every time it rains, the water has to go somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah.
So where's it gonna go? It's gonna go into the stormwater system. Well, that stormwater system can only handle so much. It dumps it into the canals, which dumps it into the State Road 84 canal, which either goes to the Everglades or to the ocean. What you have to think about is how can we capture that water and get it back into the water table? And there are several options. The most obvious one is to stick to the plan with regards to how much the percentage of the footprint of development is dedicated to water abatement. And there's a minimum standard that's set, but some of those standards have been eased by giving uh, just totally lost the word, um, but giving dispensation to the developers to shrink that. How, how come nobody has said, we're talking about a parking lot? There is such a thing as porous concrete, porous asphalt. Where it rains on there and it goes down underneath and into the water table allows it to settle in. You're turning a parking lot into, in essence, a soccer field, the same level of water being able to percolate into the system. I don't know that people have asked those types of questions. And of course, it would upset a developer to say, well, our parking lot is now gonna cost twice as much because we have to put in porous concrete. Well, okay, if it costs you twice as much, let's see where we can make that up with permitting fees and everything else so that the end result for the existing residents of Plantation is an environment that doesn't flood, that will eventually maintain our watershed the way it is and we don't have to worry about conditions that exist, for example, in Homestead, where if you drill a well in Homestead, you're hitting salt water because the Biscayne aquifer has come in that far from shore.
Right, yeah, and all, and all of these things, uh, you know, and the developers are worrying about what their immediate um problem's gonna be. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be a, a, an issue that the residents, the long-term resident of Plantation are gonna have to figure out that cost or it's gonna become their problem at some point or another. So a lot of time, it's better to just deal with it on the front end instead of dealing with the unpredictable possible disaster on the, on the end of, of all of these things, right?
Exactly, which is why I want to be on there to, to ask those questions and to, to demand at least some accounting on the part of everybody to, to think beyond just the immediacy of, this will be a great building because somebody told me it'll be a great building.
Right, and they don't understand, it, it's great for them, but is it great for you and everybody else that lives? Um, so, um, do you have um another Democrat in your race or are you the one that has two Republicans in your race? Which race are you?
I technically cannot answer that question because all races are nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan, okay.
It's a matter of public record as to what my affiliation is, but I can't be on record as saying it.
Okay, so I, I just wanna know, do you have one or two candidates in your race?
Two candidates, I'm the only, I'm in the only seat that has two candidates.
Okay, you, okay, so you're in the seat that has two candidates.
Group Five.
So that's fine, I'm just gonna leave it like that, I'm gonna leave it like that. All right, so um you, you talked about how you, um, you're concerned about the development. We talked, uh, we talked about um transportation and things that um Plantation can do to get Broward Transit to do a little bit better and so people can maybe drive their cars just a little bit less. I think we're driving our cars less nowadays anyway, just because a lot of us are stuck at home and we're not going back and forth at work. Um, what about um terms of like um security and safety in Plantation? Are you one of the cities that have a contract with BSO or does the city of Plantation have their own police department?
We have our own police department. Uh, it's a very highly rated police department. We have, our contract is independent with the FOP, the Union Representing the Police Officers of the City of Plantation. And they do an outstanding job. They, they, they really do. I'd like to see them get a little more resources because when you look at the amount of, for example, cars and personnel they have relative to the 95,000 residents, it'd be nice to help them out and give them a little more physical infrastructure to be able to be there when they need to be. But no, we do not have Broward Sheriff's Office in here. We do, like every other municipality, have uh agreements across town with various organizations. So for example, last year, when there was the explosion uh right in the LA Fitness Center, right behind the Fashion Mall, or the fountains, rather, other organizations were able to respond and assist so that our police and fire weren't overwhelmed.
Okay, all right, um, so, so that's important. The, um, the other um issue, one of the things that was talked about when I saw you on another panel was, you know, we're, we're, we're in the midst of a, I don't know, some sort of crisis in the United States right now. There's a lot, a lot of things going on. Um, today, they had the press conference about whether or not they were going to charge a police officer in the Breonna Taylor case. They decided they're not gonna do that. And one, and that, a lot of that started um with the incident with George Floyd in Minneapolis back in May, right? So it, it just kind of brought about some sort of awakening. One of the things that was happening was like, you know, Aunt Jemima decided to change their name. Um, Uncle Ben changed their name. They're making, you know, a lot of, you know, other, some monuments are coming down. I mean, you live in the city of Plantation. That was one of the things that came up, right? Um, there were, there were varying answers to this question. Some people were like, no, I don't think anything's wrong with it. Some said they were gonna leave it up to a vote. They were saying like, even though it's called Plantation, there's no remnants of a plantation. But you gave a really smart answer. I'm not gonna say what your answer is, but I remembered your answer. And as one of the, besides the Dartmouth flag, I, I remembered your answer. What are, what are your thoughts on that? And do you think that that's something, given the climate that we're in right now? And I'm, I'm one of the people that think it's gonna get a little bit worse before it gets better right now because we have an election in November, so I think it's gonna get a little bit worse. What are your thoughts on people that are, that might be asking, say, you know what? We probably should think twice about calling, you know, living in a city that's called Plantation and another one that's called Plantation Acres?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a rough thing. Um, Daryl started this back in, I wanna say June. And he, it was, it spread to nationwide because he was able to leverage social media to get people thinking about this. Why do you live in a city named Plantation? Now, if you look at the history of it, yes, it was a, a Rice company that came in and said, we wanna do this and they used the name Plantation. The issue I have with it is that we have citizens who are upset by it and we, I strongly believe in a democratic solution to these things. So as I told my students, if you're upset, get involved, and that's what Daryl did. And there is a system in place to go through the process to change the name. It involves starting a petition, getting a certain number of people to sign on to it. That certain number of people have to get validated by the Broward Supervisor of Elections. And once that happens, it goes to a vote. I am all for it going for, to a vote because when you look at the name Plantation, you can argue that it doesn't have any associations with Southern Plantation life that we all think it does. But what you're missing is the, the visual impact that that has for certain residents. Some people don't think about it, but some people, they do. And when this first came up, I noticed it when I looked at City Hall. Because City Hall as a building is very much a Palladian structure. Palladian structures were first started way back in ancient Rome, but that form of architecture was adopted by the Southern Plantation owners during the era of slavery. So to have a structure that recalls that visually says something that we need to talk about. So when it comes to how do we fix the problem, we have to have the conversation. I firmly believe that we should allow it to go to a vote for the people. And if they decide, so be it, we change the name. However, all sides need to be informed on this and there are unintended consequences to changing the name. For the city, it's a huge financial burden. Everything has to be changed from the names of streets to what's on the fire trucks, to what's on the city vehicles. But the unintended consequences are for every small business owner in the city that now has to either change websites or menus or whatever it may be. So everybody needs to have a say in this decision. It can't just be mandated by the city council and it certainly can't be mandated by just a few. So I 100% support a democratic solution to this and a, going through the process to let the people actually choose.
To decide what they wanna do, um, thank you for that. Um, and so, and I think there was another conversation, again, I, I've been doing, listening to so many panels and I don't, you know, I may say some things that were like, no, that was not us, that was another city, right? So is Plantation one of those cities that's pretty much at capacity in terms of like, how many people can move in or like how much building you can do? It's.
As far as the physical footprint of Plantation, there really is only one significant piece of land that's left vacant and that's that school board property that got me into this at the beginning.
Okay.
What we're starting to see is redevelopment of areas. So the Old Fashioned Mall, which was just a mall, is now becoming 1,400 separate units plus commercial space. You have the old American Express property that's looking at a potential four, additional 400 units. So we are, we, we have the space to grow if you're willing to change the density in that space.
Okay.
And that's the challenge. So how do we do that and still make Plantation, keep Plantation's character about it? And that's, that's a tough one to, to figure out because you have to stand against the developers, you have to stand for what's right for the current residents. To answer your question though, we could probably absorb it and we are going to absorb 3,000. 3,000-plus units that have already been approved, so that'll probably take us over 100,000 residents.
Okay, and so I know, um, some of the other cities, one of the things they want to do is to be one of those, uh, is to stop being one of the cities that people drive through, right? Like, nobody, you know, decides that they're gonna just go to Lauderdale Lakes today, right? And I'm not calling anybody out, right? I mean, I had an office in Lauderdale, had one in Sunrise, so it's not like, you know, it's just one of those cities, they're like, oh, well, I'm trying to get to Fort Lauderdale East, and I live out west, so I'm just gonna drive through this city. Um, does Plantation want to be one of the cities where people are like, you know what, there's a cool restaurant here that I want to go to and, you know, have dinner, or, you know, catch a movie? Is that part of, of what you want the character of Sunrise, um, Plantation to be? Or is it, is there enough of that already happening, and then maybe they just need to market it more for people to come in?
No, they, they have definitely taken on the desire to have Plantation be more than just a drive-through city, and the two big ways that they've done that is the creation of the Midtown District, which we were just talking about. Um, one of the big projects that was underway up until the beginning of COVID was a rework at the Westfield Mall, the old Broward Mall, where Sears went out, and they were converting that space into kind of a restaurant hub, if you will, but the problem is, all of the people who are going to move in have now pulled out of the project, so Westfield is in the position of possibly defaulting on their loans, which will have negative financial contact, consequences for the city, but more importantly, the space itself is going to be vacant for a while.
Yeah.
So there is a desire to monopolize on the major north, south, east, west corridors in Plantation, to make it the place that people want to go to when they want to go out to eat, instead of going down to Pembroke Lakes Mall, or going out east to Fort Lauderdale, yeah, come to Plantation, it's centrally located. The same sort of economic development is occurring in what's called the Gateway District, which is in East Plantation, right along 441, and they're redoing that, adding some more housing, adding more business in there, with the goal of making Plantation a place where you can do more than just drive through. The challenge is to make sure that as we push forward through COVID, that we don't lose sight of what's going on, and we're not so rigidly locked into the existing plans, that we aren't willing to think outside of the box and say, for example, well, what's best for the residents of East Plantation, who will most directly be impacted by that gateway corridor? What's best for the residents of all Plantation if Westfield defaults, and we're left with a vacant structure and a partially-built cinder block wall? How can we work with developers to possibly take on public-private partnerships to put something that would be of added value to those residents of Plantation?
Uh, exactly. So you, you talked about COVID, and COVID is one of those interesting things. I'm not sure if, um, Plantation is one of the cities that have more rental renters than it does owners, but you know, uh, I know I'm not shopping as much as I used to. The most I do right now is buy groceries. I don't think I bought a dress since April, right? And so there's, like, a lot of cities, um, depend on a lot of revenue from like taxes, and, you know, all of these different types of things. How do you, and you're, and, um, you know, if you're elected, you're gonna be dealing with the budget for the city, um, for the city, um, in the next budget, uh, cycle.
Correct.
How do you see the city dealing with that? Do they have enough reserves that it's not gonna be an issue until we, and we don't know what we're gonna, is gonna, we're gonna get back to whatever normal is, right? So what are your thoughts on that? Like, what can be done? What, what ideas do you have in place when you're faced with, what are we gonna do about this budget now?
Well, the, the current budget has been passed, it was passed last week by the city council. The, the mayor's office is responsible for putting the budget together, and by law, the budget has to be balanced. So if you're facing budget, if you're facing revenue shortfalls, the cuts have to come from somewhere. Fortunately, a lot of the things that Plantation is known for are budgeted already through the next year, and we're going to possibly face a deficit, maybe of $5 million. They worked pretty well to cut the budget down enough so that the city, city residents aren't going to see any appreciable drop in service or infrastructure. Some projects will have to get delayed, some capital improvements might have to be put off, but everything needs to get looked at, and fortunately for Plantation, Plantation was ahead of the curve on its revenues generation up until COVID hit, so we're actually a little bit ahead of projections, so that little bit ahead of projection put us kind of to level for the rest of this year. The budget I would be involved in when I get elected would be for the 2021, 22 fiscal year. At that point, I think we'll have a much better idea of the progression of COVID, hopefully by that time, if not widespread vaccination, at least something will have been improved, and we'll have a sense of how good it is, how people are adapting to it, whether they are willing to follow it. I think by that point, we'll also have the second, or the first full COVID school year taken care of, and we'll understand what's impacting the people most, because a lot of the business hit is also coming from some parents who can't leave their kids, because it's online instead of in-person. So we have to look at all of that data that's gonna come in really between December and June of next year, to see what the trends really are, and then adapt accordingly, and in that ad- adaptation, you're gonna have to look at what is on, what is projected to be spent that's not already paid for, for example, by the bonds. The bonds that are out there take care of all the parks and recs improvement, all the infrastructure improvement that we're talking about, but if the general revenue is down, how do we compensate for that? And the answer's going to be cutting somewhere. I'll tell you right now, at 30, almost $32,000 a year for each one of the council members, that would be the very first thing I cut, because we have a strong mayor form of government. The council man, the council serves as a legislative branch of city government. In my opinion, $32,000 a year, which is well above the poverty level for a family of two, for what amounts to a part-time job, is not, is not right. So that would be the first place I would cut.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'd see what else is available.
Yeah, you talked about parks and recs, and my son, um, played for, uh, Plantation Pal basketball, like, a couple, a couple of seasons, so I, I know that it's a very community, um, family-friendly, um, city, and he, we, he played basketball there for about three seasons and everything like that, so I definitely know, um, um, the residents are, are happy about that, and they're, um, enjoy what, um, what's, um, what's happening in that city. Um, the other thing, so I, so one of my, my question was about really like, do you have a lot of renters in that city? Um, are you, I, do, do you see, um, and there's a moratorium on, on, uh, on evictions and that type of thing right now, right? But at some point, you know, that, that's gonna have to give, because for the people who own the property, it's like, they haven't been collecting rent for like, since April. And the people who had rent to pay, they're like, I haven't been working since maybe the middle of March or April. So the, oh, the owners of the property needs to get paid, the people probably don't have any, um, money to pay them because they haven't been working. Is there some sort of like assistance program that, that the, that, uh, that the city, that Plantation can do, or are they, can they, uh, are there any plans to work with, maybe a bigger agency that's helping, so you can help the residents of Plantation, so you don't see all of this, you know, people, like vacancies, or...
Yeah.
...more closed on? Is that something that you, um, the council would deal with, or that's not necessarily part of...
The city council does deal with that. Um, there is what's called CRA money, the Community Redevelopment Agency money, that's out there, that is, uh, state and county funds that can be used to help, uh, for rent assistance. There are other grants available that the city hasn't taken advantage of yet, um, but I know that there are ways to help out, but unfortunately, if, if the wave of evictions is as big as everybody, everybody predicts, there's no possible way you can help everyone. So the question really becomes, how do we, as a city, provide the assistance necessary to maybe mediate these issues, to possibly allow things to change, but until, and this is so far above city politics, until the banks are willing to forgive the owners of the property certain elements, it's gonna be very difficult for those owners to then say, I'm gonna, we'd be willing to forgive the rentals. The only problem is, it's going to trickle down. If, pick a number, $2,000 a month is too expensive, and $1,000 a month isn't, well, at $1,000 a month, how many units are available at that price in the entirety of Broward County? This is where the problem becomes. Where, where do you, where do you expect to get your renters who can afford X? So it's all going to be trickling down, and the question is, how many of them will come to Plantation, and how many residents of Plantation will unfortunately be displaced? And where do they go? That's a tough one, because affordable housing is a crisis not only for the city of Plantation, but for Broward County, all of South Florida, and on one level, pretty much the entirety of the United States at this point.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. All right, so definitely a pleasure talking to you, and we started off with like, why it is that you decided to run? I know COVID made talking to residents and talking to the people a little bit different, but from, from the ones that you were able to speak to, what is it that they want to see happen in their city, right? Like, have you, um, gotten any feedback? I know your concerns were with the development, the high density development, but, um, as you're campaigning and talking and meeting different residents in the city of Plantation, what are the, what are the concerns that you've noticed that they've had?
Well, it depends on where you are. Obviously, the, the folks in East, East Plantation have different concerns than the folks in West Plantation, um, but I think everybody is concerned about the same thing, which is that the government, especially the city government, needs to be more transparent with how it does things. And that goes towards all levels, because we have an outstanding professional government administration. We have a strong mayor who exercises the authority of the office. We have a city council that does what a city council is supposed to do, but when you ask how it gets done, and when you look at the details, a lot of people don't feel that they know when things are happening. They don't know how decisions are made, and that becomes the real trick, is to make government more accountable to the very people, and make sure that they can understand, for example, when a project is going up, well, how can I find out about exactly what this project is? To try to find the documents on the city website, really difficult. So can we use modern technology to make it easier for the average citizen to get the details about development? Can we make it easier for the average citizen to communicate a particular issue to a department that needs it, and also to a city council that can then follow up and possibly get an answer as to why it did or didn't happen the way it occurred? And so for me, it's really about, when I talk to people about the benefits of technology and the benefits of transparency, and especially transparency with motivation, folks realize that, oh, that, that, that might be why these things have occurred, because we do have a rubber-stamp mentality on the city council, and nobody asks the right questions. So generally speaking, they're, they're happy to hear that I'm willing to ask those questions, and they're also very happy to hear that I'm not going in it for personal political glory, because I don't have any desire for future office.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So if someone wants to donate to your campaign, or they want to, um, volunteer some time, let them know how they can get in touch with you and find out, um, how about that?
Right there. Um, the answer to that one is, you can go to my website, cormanforcouncil.com. You can find me on Facebook at Corman for Council, or Instagram, Corman for Council, um, and there are donate buttons, there's a donate page on there, but more importantly, because as I said, I'm not asking for a lot of money, I'm not taking any large corporate donations, what I want more than anything is, if somebody goes to that website, if they have questions, to contact me, I'll gladly have a cup of coffee socially distanced with somebody and discuss what my positions are, but more importantly, take a close look at my positions, my ideas, the blog that I have on there that discusses everything from blue bags to actually the one I just wrote right before I was on with you, which is going to be about geographic representation. Look at what the priorities of the candidates are, and go on the Plantation website, take a close look at where the money is coming from in each campaign, and that should tell you exactly what the priorities are of that individual. And that goes across every race for seats three, four, and five. So cormanforcouncil.com should have all the answers.
All right, thank you very much. And, and so one, oh, so let me ask, so the census is another one of those things that are, that's extremely important. Um, I think the deadline to fill it out is the 30th, hopefully they'll extend it or something like that. Do you have an idea, what's the percentage of people in the city of Plantation that's have completed the census, and if they haven't, can you tell them like, to, how important it is that they do that? Because so many places are gonna have problem money.
Absolutely. Yeah, um, I want to go back to the 2010 census, it was roughly 65% participation in the city of Plantation, and the last information I saw is that we've exceeded that, so good for us, but the census, it's required in the Constitution. It was written in there that an accounting has to happen every 10 years, and that accounting is used for everything from figuring out how many congressional representatives you get, to the amount of money that comes your way in federal dollars, to the amount of assistance that you can expect when a hurricane hits. So for us in South Florida, it's very important, and there was a lot of misinformation about it this year with regards to the types of questions that were going to be asked. The questions are very simple, it's how many people live in your house, how old are they, what's their gender, and then they will have follow-up questions where they'll call you and ask you the more detailed questions if they want to. But as far as when that piece of paper comes, or if you go to census.us.gov, I believe the website is, don't hold me to that, Google search it, please.
It's 2020census.gov.
Thank you. So 2020census.gov, when you go to that, it will have the same form on there, it will ask the same information, and it's super easy. By law, the government has to send somebody knocking at your door if you don't respond. So if you see those people with the vest and the ID, and they come knocking on your door, don't be afraid that it's somebody pulling something sketchy. Go ahead, crack the door, they'll show you their ID. If you want to then cross-check it, you can call and cross-check it, and then they'll just ask you some questions, and that'll be it. But it is super easy, but it is next to voting, the most important thing you can do as a citizen in the United States, is to fill that out.
All right, you talked about voting, so when do they vote for you? When do the people in the city of Plantation vote for you?
That is an excellent question. Broward Supervisor of Elections is mailing absentee ballots starting tomorrow, so if you requested an absentee or mail ballot, that's gonna get to you sometime in the next week to week and a half. When you get that one, fill it out, follow the instructions exactly, put it back in the envelope, make sure you sign the envelope. If it asks for your phone number or an email address, go ahead and give it, nobody's trying to steal any information, that is simply there so that if there is a question about the ballot, they can contact you and verify that that is actually your ballot, and that you actually sent it that way. When you fill that ballot out, you can then either mail it back to the supervisor of elections. My advice would be to do that sooner rather than later. You can also go to one of the drop boxes that are around the entire county. You can check the Broward SOE site, and they will tell you where that is, or there are two drop locations for the actual supervisor of elections. One of them is in Fort Lauderdale, the other one I want to say is in Hollywood.
It's, I know it's in the Lauderdale Mall, it's like...
Lauderdale Mall. Yes, that is it. I knew it was somewhere like that.
Yes, it is, Lauderdale Mall.
So those drop boxes will be secure, nobody's gonna be able to get into them and take it, and by either dropping off at the supervisor of elections, or one of the secure drop boxes, you can guarantee that it'll be collected, and those ballots will be counted on Election Day. The other option is, if you don't want to take your mail-in ballot and mail it or drop it off, hold on to it, bring it to your polling place, they will swap out the mail ballot for an actual ballot, you will go into the voting booth and vote like everybody else on Election Day. So there are plenty of ways to vote, no matter what, make sure you go out and vote.
Absolutely.
And when you go, look all the way at the end of your ballot, because that's where Group Five is.
And we're also encouraging people to vote, um, vote early, right? And I believe early voting starts in Broward County.
It starts the Saturday, I want to say Saturday, I'd have to look at my calendar, Saturday, October 24th, maybe?
Actually, I was told it was, I thought it was the 24th, then I was told it's October the 19th to November the 1st. Does that sound right? Or that sound like too many days?
Honestly, I thought it was just simply one week, and I'm looking at my calendar to check. Uh, it was my understanding it's the 24th through the 31st.
Mm-hmm.
I could be wrong, so again, go to browardsoe.org.
Oh, yes, so, because I was, I was, I thought it was the 24th, then I told it, and then I was told it was October the 19th through November the 1st is early voting. That's probably the only early voting period throughout the state of Florida, but every city, uh, well, every county can decide to...
Yeah, I want to, I want to say Broward's is, I think Broward's is only one week, the 24th through the 31st.
Okay.
So what I would recommend is, if you're able to, plan for either Saturday the 24th or Sunday the 25th of October, to go vote without question. vote without question because it's a weekend. If you work on the weekend and you have one of those days off, pick that day, find out where your early voting location is and go vote.
Yes, definitely. We want you to vote. Um, I voted during the primaries, um, during the, um, early voting season. It was, uh, there was, uh, there was a lot of social, there was social distancing. They had everything marked off. Um, you can, you can wear your mask. Um, they, they were giving each person their individual pens, you know, like where before, you know, everyone had to use the same pen. That's no longer the case. They used to give you this, um, the envelope to put your ballot in was one that they recycled. Now it's, um, that one that they used over and over again is what I mean. So now they give you a paper one that once you're done with it, you just throw it away. They have hand sanitizer as soon as you walk in. Um, so yes, it's, it's safe and we just want you to early, um, early vote if you can. Vote by mail if you can, and you can track your vote by mail ballot. So do it early so we don't have run into any shenanigans with the mail. And if you have to, and you absolutely need to wait until November 3rd, that's the last date that they're gonna have an opportunity to vote for Rob Corbin for Plantation City Council.
Correct.
Alright, so you can give your closing statements. And like I said, it was a pleasure speaking with you today. I learned a lot from you, believe it or not.
Oh, well, thank you. It was a pleasure speaking with you too. And I'm glad your brother went to Dartmouth because
That's right.
Wait, what year was he?
Uh, 90, he was class of 97.
Okay, so he was there right after I left. Alright, well, yes. I mean, Dartmouth, we all bleed green, so we get it.
That's right. And he has a friend, his, uh, what, he went there in 97. He graduated with, um, his classmates. So they were validating cert, validating turn, it's a little turn of their class. And they all, they went to Dartmouth together. And her niece went to Dartmouth, and I think she was class of, um, 2019 or 2020. She actually just graduated.
She might have just graduated with my daughter.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Um, well, thank you for the opportunity. Honestly, I, I, I love getting out and speaking to people as much as I can. And, and in the era of COVID, I haven't been able to do it the way I wanted to. So it really has been online forums. And so all I can say is, this comes from a former government teacher. The most important thing to do is to vote. The most important thing to do is find out the information about the candidates and determine who has the pro, the platform that best aligns with what you want for your representatives. If that's me, great. If it's my opponent, I'm fine with that. But no matter what, go out and vote. Because local elections and your local officials have more of an impact on your life and how you exist on a daily basis than do any of those up-ballot races. The up-ballot races are the big flashy ones. But really, your everyday existence is gonna be determined by the folks who sit on city council. I'm going into it with no ties to lobbyists, no ties to PACs, no ties to developers, no ties to big money at all because I don't wanna be beholden to anybody except the people in Plantation. That being said, when November 3rd rolls around or next week when you get your absentee ballot, if you see my name in Group Four, Group Five and you like what you've heard, please vote for me. But either way, cormanforcouncil.com. Take a look at it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good one.
Thank you so much.